You call the Schaumburg Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Present.
Trustee Bishki.
Present.
Trustee Medei.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Claire.
Present.
Trustee Patel.
Present.
President Daly.
Present, all present accounted for. I would ask if you have any electronic devices that you please turn them off so you do not disturb our meeting. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask trustee Patel to lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, please write.
My pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Patel. Next item is the approval of minutes for the August 12, 2025 meeting. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So motion and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the approval of expenditures for $11,392,108.53.
We'll do approve the expenditures as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the fun stuff on the agenda is to present a plaque, a service plaque, excuse me, for 20 years of service to trustee Medei.
Congratulations. I know we're gonna wait for, wait for the phone, I gotta unbox it anyway, so. Haven't quite done that yet. Yeah, apparently, okay. Still wrapped. Twenty years, wow. It's probably before you know it, right?
It does. When you think about it, my first ribbon cutting was basically putting the last beam on the convention center.
Oh.
With Al Larson. We went up in a bucket and signed it, and nobody else wanted it.
And it's still there.
It's still there.
All right, now, congratulations. There you go. And can take, taking your pictures, our new director of communications. How about that? Thank you. All right, moving on. We have liquor license requests. This evening, we have a request from Mr. Rob Anderson for two Class A liquor licenses and one Class C2 liquor license for Hyatt Regency Schaumburg located here at 1800 East Gulf Road. Okay, and these are new operators. Nice to see you this evening.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening.
Proceed.
Thank you.
Give your name for the record.
Rob Anderson.
Okay.
Jason Mashney.
Okay.
I'm the attorney for the new operator at the Hyatt Regency Schaumburg, and this is our new general manager. We've taken over for the prior operator. We are seeking to get licenses for our entity that are the same as the existing licenses, the two Class As for our restaurant and our banquets, and the C2 for room service. There's gonna be no change in the operations of the hotel. It's gonna be all the same as it was before. We're just taking over the operations, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, good. Well, we like our Hyatt the way it is, so that's good. We're glad to hear that, so. Any questions or comments from the board? No. Okay, so we ask that you come to Liquor License Commissioner's Office, which is also the mayor's office, during normal business hours and collect any paperwork that you need. There's a fee to be paid, and then background check, and that, and once all that's completed, you'll be issued the license, but you can continue to operate through that process.
Thank you.
Just so you're aware, that has all been completed.
Excellent.
Background check, fingerprints, payment.
Oh, okay, so you're way ahead of the game. All right, sounds good. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, next item is a request from Mr. Hamish Shu Patel. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Are you here? Okay, we will defer that one. It's for a place called The Secret Kitchen. Okay, we'll defer that one until next meeting. We then have a request from Mr. or Miss.
Christina.
Thank you. Who said that? Thank you, Jack. For one Class F1 liquor license for Farmer's Milk Cafe and Bakery located at 1160, ah, here we go, South Roselle Road. Now, this is a new business, so take your time. Nice to see you this evening, so just give us your name for the record. And it's a new business, and tell us a little bit about what it's about.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Kristina Achlinok. I'm the Farmer's Milk owner. So if you don't mind, I'll be looking at my notes, because my English isn't very good. I'm so sorry for that.
Quite all right.
Yes, so yeah, Farmer's Milk is a food brand dedicated to, well, some high-quality products. Founded in Ukraine 14 years ago, the company has grown into an chain of nearly 70 locations in Ukraine, in Kiev, and we have two locations now in Florida, in Miami, and so we're excited to be launching our first location in Chicago, especially in Schaumburg, that's fabulous awesome area. So we are producing our own cheesecakes, cakes, dairy products, and breakfast, lunch. It's a family concept, family-friendly concept, and so we're really happy to be here today. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're glad you're here, so you'll have to make sure and let us know when you, when you do open. 1160 South Roselle, so just refresh my memory as to where that is.
It's the former KFC.
Yes.
Oh, former KFC, okay, all right. You know exactly where it is.
They just closed like a month ago, and we just signed the commercial lease, and yeah.
All right, so I assume you'll be doing some remodeling, obviously, at that location, so.
Just a little, because it's like a restaurant, so it's the second-gen property, so yeah.
All right, great. Anything else you plan to do at this location, or that's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, like, you know, some cosmetic renovation, because, for example, colors of KFC is not our colors, and yeah, we need to make cosmetic renovation, and we're ready to start.
Okay, all right, questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, I was just curious, that liquor license, you know, for, for breakfast and lunch and dairy stuff and.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. You know, for example, like Saturday on Sunday, and the whole family coming to, to have like cheesecake and cake and coffee, and we're going to serve like, like alcohol, for example, prosecco or wine, for example, white wine. It's really delicious with the cake and cheesecake, yeah, and, for example, red velvet, you know? Yeah, and it's, it's like a concept to have, to spend good time with your family, and maybe I'll ask my friend there and have a glass of prosecco. Why not?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, yes, sounds very good. Okay, so as I explained to the last petitioner, that you need to pick up any paperwork out of Liquor Commissioner's Office, again, located with the mayor's office, fill out any, any of the paper there, there's a payment and fee, background check, et cetera. Once all that's completed, then a license will be issued, okay?
Thank you so much.
Make sure you let us know when you open.
Thanks, of course. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay, all right. Next item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda will be read in its entirety, voted on, one motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the village clerk, so that it can be removed from the consent agenda and discussed further under committee reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on the consent agenda in one motion. Will the clerk please now, please read the consent agenda?
Number nine, liquor licenses. A, the motion would be to ratify the request from Ms. Carrie Ellen of Fogode Chao for one Class D one-day liquor license for Schaumburg Park Foundation Link's Technology Cup on Wednesday, August 13, at Schaumburg Golf Club, 401 North Roselle Road, and waive the fee. B, the motion would be to approve the request from Mr. William Solomon of St. Gregory of Nisa Parish for one Class D one-day liquor license for their Fiesta Mexican Festival on Sunday, September 14, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. at 1451 West Bodie Road, and waive the fee. Ten, correspondence. The motion would be to approve the request from St. Gregory of Nisa Parish, a religious organization, to hold a Queen of Hearts raffle starting May 24, 2023, with weekly drawings to be held at Pilot Pete's Restaurant located at 905 West Irving Park Road, grant variants to grant variances to code section 117.31. B, the motion would be to approve the request from St. Gregory of Nisa Parish to hold a raffle from September 15, 2025, through November 14, 2025. The winner's picked on November 14, 2025, at Chandler's Banquet's located at 401 North Roselle Road, waive the fidelity bond requirement, and grant a variance to code section 117.31. Eleven, proclamations. A, Constitution Week, September 17 through 23, 2025. B, Emergency Nurses Week, October 5 through 11, 2025. C, Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, September 2025. D, Payroll Week, first week of September 2025. Twelve, Engineering and Public Works Committee. The motion would be to reject all bids and approve a waiver of competitive bidding and award the 2025 Valve Replacement Program to Concept Plumbing, Inc. of Palatine, Illinois, in the amount of $316,926. B, the motion would be to award the bid for the 2025 Small Diameter Asbestos Cement Pipe, ACP Rehabilitation Project, to the lowest responsible bidder, Hoare Construction, Inc. of Goodfield, Illinois, in the amount of $204,520. C, the motion would be to authorize participation in the Choice Partners Cooperative Contract and award the Ballpark Concessions Mechanical Upgrade Project to Bear Construction Company of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, in the amount of $319,992.93. D, the motion would be to authorize participation in the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Contract and award the purchase of two Ford F-350s to Sutton Ford of Decatur, Illinois, in the amount of $103,000. E, the motion would be to authorize participation in the Illinois State Contract and award the purchase of one Freightliner Truck Chassis to TransChicago Truck Group of Elmhurst, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed the approved budget. F, the motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Utility Burial Feasibility Assessment Study Preliminary Engineering and Project Management Services with Kim Lee Horn of Warrenville, Illinois, in the amount of $144,316, and approve the required resolution. Thirteen, Finance, Legal, and General Government Committee. A, the motion would be to approve the Finance Department Monthly Report for June 2025. B, the motion would be to approve the Finance Monthly, the Finance Department Monthly Report for July 2025. C, the motion would be to approve membership in the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference and that membership dues in the amount of $2,898.91 be paid. D, the motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with the Schaumburg Dance Ensemble for the 2025 production of The Nutcracker and approve the required resolution. E, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance making the First Amendment to the fiscal year 2025 annual budget. F, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 60, 60 million general obligation line of credit note of the necessary expenditures providing for the security and payment of said note and authorizing the sale of said note to Schaumburg Bank and Trust Company, N.A. G, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of tax increment financing revenue note, North Schaumburg Redevelopment Project of the Village of Schaumburg, Cook, and DuPage Counties, Illinois, in providing for the execution of a depository and escrow agreement and note orders in connection therewith. Fourteen, Committee of the Whole. The motion would be to direct staff to review the bike path location and on-street parking during Phase II Engineering for the Spring and Scooth Road Improvements Project. Fifteen, Planning, Building, and Development Committee. The motion would be to approve a special event request for an outdoor garber concert to be held on August 30, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. until 11:30 p.m. at Wintress Field.
Excuse me, please note for the record that trustee Claire votes no.
Thank you. Sixteen, Plan Commission. The motion would be to approve a special use for a home-based business for Silman Residence, 431 Putnam Lane. Seventeen, Zoning Board of Appeals. A, the motion would be to approve a site plan approval, special use for a daycare and landscape variation for Children's Land Daycare, 2371 West Schaumburg Road. B, the motion would be to approve a special use for a dance studio for Dance Family Chi, 1242 Remington Road, Unit B. Resolutions. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-050, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Utility Burial Feasibility Study Assessment Preliminary Engineering and Project Management Services with Kim Lee Horn. B, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-051, approving and authorizing the execution of a talent buying agreement between the Village of Schaumburg and Schaumburg Dance Ensemble. Nineteen, Ordinances. A, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-074, authorizing and providing for the acquisition of certain real estate through eminent domain or otherwise commonly known, known as southwest corner of Eleanor Route 62, Algonquin Road, and Hammond Drive, 823 to 53 East Algonquin Road. B, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-075, granting an approval of a special use for home-based business for Silman Residence, 431 Putnam Lane. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-076, approving the purchase of sale, approving a purchase and sale agreement authorized, authorizing the purchase by the Village of Schaumburg of real property located at 1456 East Algonquin Road, Schaumburg, Illinois. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-077, making the First Amendment to the annual budget for the Village of Schaumburg for the fiscal year commencing May 1, 2025, and ending April 30, 2026. E, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-078, providing for the issuance of tax increment financing revenue note, North Schaumburg Redevelopment Project of the Village of Schaumburg, Cook and DuPage Counties, Illinois, and providing for the execution of a depository and escrow agreement and note orders in connection therewith. F, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-079, providing for the issuance of not to exceed 60 million general obligation line of credit note of the Village of Schaumburg, Cook and DuPage Counties, Illinois, and to pay, to pay the costs of necessary expenditures providing for the security for and payment of said note and authorizing the sale of said note to Schaumburg Bank and Trust Company, N.A. G, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-080, proposing the establishment of Schaumburg Development Special Area One, Wise Commons Residential Division, in the Village of Schaumburg, Cook and DuPage Counties, Illinois, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures connected therewith. H, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-081, granting a special use for a dance studio for family, dance studio for Dance Family Chi, 1242 Remington Road, Unit B. I, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-082, granting a site plan approval, special use for daycare center and landscaping variation for Children's Land Daycare, 2371 West Schaumburg Road. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve is read with item A under Planning, Building, and Development. Trustee Claire wrote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Committee reports. We have none listed for this evening. Comments from the public? This is an opportunity to speak before the Schaumburg Village Board. We ask that you give your name, address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to speak can hold forth. Okay, moving on. Counsel report.
No report, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, president's report. I do have one item, which is appointments of committee and commission members. I am going to impose upon our village clerk, if she would be, be so kind, is to read these into the record. There is a long list, so please bear with us on these items.
President Daly requests the board's concurrence in the appointments, resignations on the following committee commissions at the August 26, 2025 board meeting. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, reappointments. Lynn Peterson, term ends 4/30/28. Angel Garcia, term ends 4/30/26. Sandra Pejak, term ends 4/30/26. Board of Health, all terms end 4/30/2026. Reappointments. David Farnsworth, M.D., Chair. Shaquille Ahmed, Farm, M.D. Funde of Aging, Committee of Aging, all terms end 4/30/26. Reappointments. Bernadette Siegel, Co-Chair. Kim Kettle, Co-Chair. Rajard Puskarz. Diana Murray. Kathy Ray. Marilyn Pandy. Diane Schorr. Alexander Bonarigo. Kathleen Cosla Martinez. Culture, Cultural Commission, all terms end 4/30/26. Reappointments. Linda Kane, Chair. Kevin Miller. Marilyn Pandy. Betty Solomon. Jonathan Cunningham. Michael Kazakis. Bobby Marchuk. Marilyn Carr. Manal Patel. Michael Niemann, Ex officio. Rob Ward, Park District Rep, Ex officio. Electrical Commission, all terms end 4/30/26. Free appointments. Daniel Goggan, Chair. Michael Leswitz. Jeffrey Oster. Kevin Ruveing. Environmental Committee, all terms end 4/30/26. Reappointments. Donna Panico Atkins, Chair. Donna Johnson. Rajard Puskarz. Robert Waxmuth. Elizabeth Wimmer. Pratik Patel. Sandeep Alavandi. Kritika Mutu Kumar. Pilots Technical Advisory Commission, PTAC, reappointments. Josh Kanada, Alternate, Term Ends 4/30/26. Matt Van Bergen, Term Ends 4/30/26. Police Commission Board, Reappointment. Bill Wolf, Assistant Secretary, Term Ends 4/30/27. Schaumburg Business Development Commission, All Terms End 4/30/2026. Appointments. Brandon Cork, Cannon Solutions, Chair. Chris Smith, Wheels. Reappointments. Andrea Bewer, Schaumburg Business Association. Neff, Zach, IKEA. Jennifer Preston, IKEA Alternate. Samantha Gravina, IKEA Alternate. George Pershan, Trend Building Services. Karen Schumacher, NCH Endeavor Health. Tom Gosh, GLM. Daniel Benassi, Andre Commercial Realty. Anil Barot, L&amp;T Technology. James Burke, Link's Technology Solutions, Inc. Mark Batista, Roman Auto Group. James Early, A La Carte. Teresa Fadeley, Schaumburg Bank and Trust. Brian Funai, Musada Funai, Eft and Mitchell. Jasmine Panayatov. Proceed. Theodore McGinn, Lovell Law. Dieter Heigl, Renaissance Schaumburg Hotel. Kurt Hutchinsons, Illinois Bone and Joint Institute. Jeffrey Miller, Divine Signs and Graphics. Dan Origer, DJ's Auto Service Center. Heather Larson, Meet Chicago Northwest. Joel G. Rigir, Rigir Private Wealth Management. Chris Spica, Woodfield Mall, General Manager. Randy Yu, Misumi. Tony LaFreniere, Schaumburg Park District. Timothy Gallagher, First Equity Group. September Fest Committee, All Terms End 4/30/2026. Reappointments. Rich Wiskirchen, Chair. Mike Braheeny, Layout Chair. Eric Todd, Entertainment Chair. Natalie Hansen, Parade Chair. Sue, Laura Sue Awick, Parade Co-Chair. Bill Fleisch, Local Entertainment Chair. John Fraser, Local Entertainment Co-Chair, Sponsorship and Promotions Co-Chair. J.R. Flynn, Committee Co-Chair, Sponsorship and Promotions Chair. Ken Johnson, Taste of Schaumburg Chair. George Musman, Student Representatives Chair. Jeff Sanderson, Taste of Schaumburg Not-for-Profit Day Chair. Mary Jane Lang, Arts and Crafts Show Chair. Victor D'Amelio, Taste of Schaumburg Not-for-Profit Day Co-Chair. Brandy Hansen, Craft Beer and Wine Chair. Jeff Mitek, Layout Co-Chair. Bruce Weber, Maintenance and Fireworks Co-Chair. Joe Lenosi, Maintenance and Fireworks Chair. Maui Mendez, Entertainment Co-Chair and Sponsorship and Promotions Co-Chair. Don Hamilton, Volunteer Chair. Tracy Victor Papapproko, Craft Beer and Wine Co-Chair. Melanie Brown, Arts and Crafts Co-Chair. Mark Campbell, Taste of Schaumburg Co-Chair. Arturo Baring, Volunteer Co-Chair. Jeanette Auckland, Main Stage Entertainment Co-Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to concur with the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's all I have. Managers report.
Good evening. I have one very important item for the village board this evening. It is my pleasure to bring forth a recommendation to appoint Deputy Chief Fabio Puccini as the next Fire Chief for the Village of Schaumburg. I think it's important to also recognize Chief Walters for his service. He's got one more board meeting, and so we'll have the opportunity to do that, but when Chief Walters came here in 2025... to do that. But when Chief Walters came here in 2017, one of the things that I heard from the village board was that we need to work on preparing our people to accept leadership positions within the department. And so Chief Walters and I, with the resources allocated by the board, have been able to put in place a number of things to help develop leaders, not only in the fire department but across the organization. And so Fabio has embraced what we have offered. He's taken advantage of the opportunities that have been given to him and has distinguished himself as being worthy of being the next chief for the Schaumburg Fire Department. And so after his 23 years of service here with the village, including serving in every rank within the department, I'm very confident in his leadership skills, his abilities, and more importantly, his dedication to be the next leader of the fire department. So as I said when I started, it is my pleasure to recommend to the village board the appointment of Deputy Chief Fabio Pacini as the next fire chief for the Schaumburg Fire Department.
And that's effective September 13, 2025. Questions, comments? Look for a motion to concur with the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There you go, Chief. You'll let us know in a month or so if that was a wise idea, right? Okay, moving on. Trustee comments?
September Fest this weekend.
Yes, September Fest. Get your walking shoes on or your arm for tossing those candies out, so.
I'm warming up.
Yep, okay, there you go.
From the golf cart.
Yes, from the golf cart. That's right.
I took my first walk today to practice.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.